By diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for its change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction, everybody knows everybody.
And online tonight, we have Jennifer Sullivan, Chuck, and Frank.
Okay. Any additions or deletions?
Um, no, well, we've got a couple, I think John has a couple of announcements.
Couple of BCA.
Okay.
During, um, new business, and it looks like Harry Van Meter is joining. Um, and a couple of things just to touch base on during, uh, the road foreman's report, but nothing formally formally to add, or that has been requested, and I don't know if there's anything that anybody else sees or can think of.
About the approval of the minutes.
Minutes looked okay to me. Um, I'll move that we approve the minutes from last time.
Second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Any announcements? Doning administrator?
I don't think there was anything from Jonas this evening, I'm just checking my email to make sure. I've not received anything from Jonas in the last several days, so I don't think there's anything.
Uh, no planning commission report at this meeting.
And no coin. Road Foreman, did we have anything from Keith?
I received no report.
Talked to him at all, Bob at all, or any of you people?
I had the time, I attended through Zoom the mutual aid biennial review with Stephanie Bork from Rich Rutland Regional Planning today, there was, I think, the town clerk from Mendon, the town clerk from Chittenden, and the town manager from Fairhaven were on, and there wasn't any issues they thought needed revising, and I only asked the question of, were they, was Stephanie aware whether Bennington had a similar thing, since we deal with Rupert so much, and she was not aware of any things such that would be Bennington, it was, this agreement is strictly Rutland County towns, except Clarendon did not, has not voted to join, Sudbury is a contract outfit that deals mostly with Addison County, and Rutland City may be getting involved, but they aren't presently, um, and Killington let it lapse, I guess, so, uh, but.
Is that something we need to renew every so often?
We, May, May 1st, and I got confused, they were dealing in so many acronyms that I couldn't keep up, uh, I don't know whether the local emergency management plan has to be renewed, uh, every May 1st or something, but then, I think there's something comes up with this mutual aid agreement that, uh, in May that we'll be voting on, but, uh, there didn't seem to be any glaring issue that needed to be, uh, addressed, most of the towns, practically all the towns, I think, use the league for the insurance, so there isn't any, um, anomalies there.
Well, thank you for joining. You have a couple of.
So I've had forwarded you all a couple of emails over the last couple of weeks, just of various things that are in need of doing from the road standpoint.
Yeah.
One of them is the complete streets accounting type of a situation that we have to look into, um, let's see, I'm just trying to pull them all up. There's the form that needs to be filled out about, that just discusses the, the weight limits on town roads, and we just need to go through, and I believe that a lot of this is traditionally things that Keith has always done in the past, so I just haven't heard back, I've just received emails to my account, so I know that Keith has been included on these, but I just haven't heard specifically what his status is on those, so we might just be able to check out, check in with him, and figure out if there's anything that he needs support in doing, or if that's covered. There's also the fiscal year 23 Class 2 roadways and town highway structures grant, which is coming up, and that, there's some, been some informational, you know, stuff that has gone on around, gone around with that, and I believe that that's due, the intent is due in April, so it's just things to start looking into, so you've all received that, so I would just say, take a look in your boxes, and let me know how I can help, but just some general bookkeeping stuff that needs to be taken care of and filed.
If we don't hear anything from Keith on any of these, I'll try and remember at some point to just reach out to him and have him touch base with you.
Yeah, I'll try to send him a text, too, I mean, I've just contacted him through email, which I know he's not often sitting at his computer, so.
So if you send him a text and ask him about moving, he's pretty good about getting back, so, and if not, then we'll, we'll, uh. Anything else, anybody heard, anything, seems everything seems to be going all right? Roads seem to be maintained well, or?
I think so far, as we get changeable weather, it's gonna be different, but, I think they're, they're keeping up okay, I haven't had anybody knock on my door saying I'm stuck in a rut.
Right, that's a good deal. Okay, assessor's report?
There is a report, it's something that needs to be printed, um, let's see, start with the report. This was sent to you all this afternoon, so you have it digitally, but for February 8th of 2022, uh, we are actively investigating options for doing a reappraisal for Pola in 2025, Karen will be attending the equalization and sales validation training webinar on February 9th from 9 to 12, and the current use training webinar on February 16th and 18th from 9 to 12, there is no cost to the town for these classes, inspection letters have been mailed to taxpayers who have obtained build, building permits in 2021, and those whose previously permitted work was not completed as of April 1st, 2021, we will be inspecting these properties within the next few months as weather permits, Lisa will continue to work remotely from home, Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays, and as necessary to keep current with the office work, um, and Lisa had sent, um, sorry, trying to follow, she had sent me the certificate of no appeal or suit pending, that should be signed, just for I's dotted and T's crossed by the board, so I'll get that printed out for you all as well.
Any questions, or? Deb have a memo?
Do you all have it? So for signature of all members present, there's a liquor license for Sheldon's Market, town report, if that's a printer, ballot should be arriving within the next few days, the office will be closed Monday, February 21st, have a good evening, respectfully submitted, Deb, and that liquor license is in the folder.
Usually make a motion on that, like approving the liquor license for Sheldon's Dorot, reseal, reseal, somebody wanna make that motion?
Yeah, sure. Bob moved, I second, that's fine, yeah.
Bob and Jessica, got it covered. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Make sure this is disapproved, this is approved.
Sorry, over here, okay, got it.
Thank you. Town clerk's memo, or the treasurer's memo?
So from Julie, there are two warrants this week, the payroll for this period was 9,29226, accounts payable was 27,96629, general fund monies 14,39553, highway 12,0043717, and wastewater 2,042585, the low income water assistance program paperwork that you signed recently has resulted in a payment towards a wastewater bill, unfortunately, the state of Vermont accidentally transferred the payment into our account twice, I have been unable to reach anyone about how to fix it, but would like your approval to go ahead and fix the problem of the overpayment when I can finally get ahold of the person in charge. I have been very busy with tax collection this week, taxes are due by close of business, which is 4:00 PM on Thursday, payments received after that time will be considered delinquent, and at the bottom are the two motions for the payroll warrant number 22048, and the accounts payable warrant number 22049.
Hey, does anybody wanna make that motion? Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the warrants?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Deb is also here. Hi, Deb.
Okay, so, we also need to, uh, have a, a motion for Julie to, uh, give the state back that money, I guess she would like our, our permission, so.
Sure, I'll move that we have Julie fix that problem of the overpayment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That's, that's excellent that that's working out.
Yeah, that's.
Somebody took advantage of it?
Yeah, I, I know that when we were discussing doing that paperwork, we were talking about possibly publicizing this program a little bit more, and I think it would be great if we had a little blurb about it that could go in the email that goes out to everybody, you know, the email newsletter, and then maybe, Julie's not here, but whenever the, whenever the wastewater fees go out, if we could print a little flyer and put it in there, just alerting people who are paying wastewater.
I think she was, she was planning, something like that.
Good.
We talked about that a little bit.
There's a question that just came in through the chat on Zoom, which is directed to Deb, um, may I go ahead and ask you?
Please.
So, Deb, wondering if you know if the post office slowdown effect made, might affect the delivery and receipt of mail-in ballots, we've heard from the postmaster that there have been some serious issues with that.
Nobody has a crystal ball, you know, we gotta do the best we can, and, and hope for the best.
I'm trying, I'm trying, here I come.
Hi.
Um, okay, um, I'm not gonna say that it's not gonna have an effect, um, what I was seeing, what I was seeing on the list brick today was, um, some talk about the ballot being held up at some towns that were expecting them early this week, um, so, yeah, I can't answer the question, if people, right now, as of this moment, we do not have ballots by, by state law, we're supposed to have them in our possession on February 9th, um, and that's tomorrow, I, I seriously doubt that they will be with us as of tomorrow, if there's towns throughout the state that have not received theirs yet, um, so, I can't answer that, I know that there's been some concerns, we do have the Dropbox, the secure Dropbox, that's always available, uh, people can put them in the mail, we check during election time, we do check the mail very frequently, um, people can hand deliver their ballots if they would like, so, I, I can't speak for the post office, I just know that there are some slowdowns as, in, in our area, as people have probably noticed.
Okay, I, yeah, that's all on them, it's nothing to do with us, we're ready to do.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, we've done, we've done everything we're supposed to do, we don't have control over, we don't have control over paper availability, we don't have control over, uh, things getting held up in warehouses, last year, I had my, a memory card getting held up in a warehouse, and I didn't have it within the two weeks prior to the election, so like a few days before the election, we were testing the tabulator, so, um, there's, yeah, there's so many things that are beyond our control at this point.
Okay, I guess unfortunately, we don't have a good answer for that question, but that's all we can do, so is there anything else? I guess not, huh? Emergency management, anything with the paper?
Yes, um, Bob Merlino emailed the board, letting everybody know that he attended two virtual Vermont State COVID telephone conference calls, and that concludes the emergency management director's report.
Okay. Health officer, Jennifer got anything?
Jennifer is here this evening, Jennifer, I don't know if you'd like to speak, but she let me know before the meeting this evening that there's nothing to report.
Okay.
This time around.
Wastewater treatment, I've been talking with Jill about the sewer and drain, I think, I think we owe it, but I got a few bills that I gotta share with, a couple invoices, so I'll be with, I'll get with, uh, Julie, and, and tell her that I'm gonna leave this check and stuff in with the, with the checks, you'll put that in with her stuff, Jill, Jill feels that they probably swapped it out, it's just their bookkeeping let that one slide by, and, but we do have the, the pump that they pulled out, and for some reason, she feels that it felt, that failed prematurely, so we're gonna send it to a pump rebuilding place to have it rebuilt as a spare, and hopefully that will be, um, less than half of what a new pump is, so, that will be good, but I've been, I've had a couple conversations with Jill about this, and go from there, and, and, oh, she had a little, a blurb for us, too, didn't she, Kristin?
Yeah, just realizing, I'm just having email issues, but I've resolved them, now I'm just seeing a couple that have come in, so, um, so, let's see, Jill emailed this afternoon that they are, and she included the wastewater treatment facility DMR submission files for December 2021 and January 2022, and VTOMs updates since 12/18/21, and those are available electronically, she didn't really like those, she also noted that they're still trying to recruit an intern from Castleton to fill the weekend hours, future priorities include how to proceed with potential sludge holding upgrades, the latest meeting with John Kiernan from RCAP, to try to see if infrastructure funding can be paired with RD funds to get to 100% grant funding, upcoming projects, scheduled replacement of repair of air valve near end of Forest Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station with Mike McDougall, all 2021 jetting is complete, will return in July of 2022 to get the last few sections of the system along 30 Main Street, Nelson Terrace, and Egg Street, install of new hose bid faucets, and most are broken slash leaking on the inside and outside of the facility, we'll do this in the spring on the inside faucets, as always, please let me know if you have any questions, Jill Marsano.
Do you wanna speak about our meeting, or just?
Oh, sure, I can say a little, yeah, Mike and I met with, what was his last name? John?
John Kiernan?
John Kiernan, who, um, we met with him with Jill at the wastewater plant, uh, last week, and he represents a nonprofit that helps towns find money for wastewater plants, which is great, and it sounds like there is a lot of money coming down the pipe, maybe not immediately, but within the next couple years that can be used for wastewater, and he seems like an excellent resource who will be able to help us get hold of it, and we asked him, and he, he, we're not gonna owe him anything for his work, because they're a nonprofit, so he just is gonna be able to help us out, and it seemed, I don't know about you, Mike, but it seemed really great to me, I was like, this is very helpful, yeah.
I was, I was quite impressed, it seems, it didn't seem like it was a bunch of smoke, the guy, he's, he's a skilled engineer in, in the wastewater industry, but now he works for a company to secure funding for all different kinds of pub, good, good things for public wastewater, drinking water, and the company that he worked for, they do other kinds of projects also, they've been around for quite a while, but that's, that's their whole goal, is to be able to help communities afford the projects that they need, and without any costs added on to the project, so, if we can, if we can get every, all the dots connected, it could be very beneficial for.
Yeah, and it sounded like he could help us write the grants as well, which would be very helpful.
All that.
Good meeting.
All that kind of clerical work, and, and behind the scenes kind of work to get the money was, is all handled by him and his company, and.
And he was also familiar with the person who had, we, we had done some work a few years ago, where we had had an engineer do a part one.
Right.
I forget the name of that person.
Jenny Off.
But he, he knew her, and was familiar with her, and could speak to her about the work she'd already done, so that if we went forward, we could build on that work and move into the next step of actually designing what the upgrade needs to be done, so.
Cause he worked, he worked as an engineer, and Jill had actually worked with him several years ago, when she was working with an engineering firm, and, and so, he's, he's very familiar with the process, and now he's just on a different level, on a different, playing a different hand of cards in the, in the big picture, so to speak, he says, you know, so.
Why does he exist, I mean, or how does he is?
Um, federal money, some of the federal money that goes toward, um, that goes toward these various programs to help people build wastewater plants, and I forget the acronyms of these programs, but they have, I feel the same way as you, John, about acronyms, but, so, he said that some of the money, that they put a little slice of the money toward funding programs like his that help people get the money.
I see.
Because they understand that small towns like us don't have a lot of staff or time to go hunting down this grant and that grant, so, yeah, so his, his job is funded by, by federal money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It seems like, John, when I went on the website, now this was a couple of months ago, when we first heard about him, he sent some background information, and I'll try and dig it up and send it to you, but it seems like this company originated down in Boston, maybe 30 years ago or more, to build some like low-income housing.
Okay.
So, there are a bunch of engineers that figured out how to get, how to get the federal money that was available, and use it, you know, kind of the middlemen, so to speak, to get these projects underway, and, and they had good success with that, so they've, they've branched out quite a lot, and it sounds like it's a pretty good-sized firm that he happens to work for, and they're around in a lot of different areas to help at, um, all these, uh, smaller towns that, you know, that don't have the funding to, to provide these essential services that are necessary, like wa, safe water and sewage and such.
Clean water, yeah, okay.
So that's that for everything, we're down to older unfinished business.
The old, this is unfinished, I was able to print out the form for the assessor's office, so, that's what they've asked for you to sign.
Do you know if, uh, Tim has ever had a chance to get down and survey that property yet?
To describe that as a.
Okay, so, um, got it.
Recording of the books task for the grand list is what, did you want to make a motion for that, or that's?
Never hurts.
It is, um, it's just certifying the completion, so to speak, I think, of the grand list.
It seems like the, I guess if we make a motion to accept us, then, then we've just gone overboard instead of, right, so.
Yeah, Johnson, it never hurts.
Okay, so Dan make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You got a second?
I'll second.
If you're, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, so this is just a certification that there's no appeals or suit pending after the lodging of the grand list, okay. In the town-owned property, I think the last thing that we've been, that we're waiting on, one of the, one of the few things we're left waiting on is the survey of that property, and I don't, I don't know that it's, I haven't heard anything that has been surveyed, and Bob wasn't.
Didn't notice any flags or anything.
Hasn't heard anything, or seen any, any evidence of, of it's been surveyed, so we need to have it surveyed before we can sell it. DRB PPC clerk position, the biggest thing we're waiting on, clerk, we have, we have someone, but we need to come up with a number. We have, we have someone, but we need to come up with a number for compensation.
So I can share with you my update there. Um, so I reached out, just started to begin communications with Jessica and with Keith and with Julie to kind of wrap our arms around what the budget number is, what that position's going to look like a little bit deeper, and then to kind of move from there. And we sort of figured that once tax collection is over, Julie might have a little bit more space in her day to, to figure that out.
To determine whether a raise of wages, and then you can...
So I just wanted to ask the board if it would be okay if I communicated again with the person that's interested, just to let her know that we appreciate the interest, we just need a little bit more time to figure out what that role's going to look like, and I was going to see if there would be interest in serving as the clerk for both.
And, and to determine a, a pay rate?
Right, that's what we need to figure.
Yeah, and you can just tell them as far as for the planning commission, that it would just be once a month.
Once a month.
And it's the fourth Monday. So, yeah, it would be an hour and a half on the fourth Monday.
The DRB meets as needed, but what does that, like, two, three times a year?
I guess it depends.
Well, it used to be.
It used to be.
It's looking like quite more, this, ah, three or four times this year, I read that thing.
DRB, yeah, yeah.
Well, once, I guess once this year.
2022, yeah.
So is that all right if I, I'll make?
Yeah, that sounds like a good thing to keep, to let her know that we're still, we still have some, some things to line up and get in order. Any new business?
Oh, I'm still in old, unfinished business. It wasn't listed here, but we had talked last time about the library and the library steps. And I don't know, was someone going to like look into the info about who we contacted last time? Is there any update on that? That's fine. I, I do have an update. Um, this Thursday, I assume you got the email, at 4:00 PM this Thursday, Bob and I are going to meet with the library director and somebody from the library board to go look at the situation with the repairs that they need in the library. So we're, yeah, as facilities people, we're gonna go, we're gonna go talk to them.
Okay. If there's anything else under older unfinished business? I guess the, we can mention about the meeting that we're gonna have for the West Paulette.
Yeah, the municipal planning grant committee is gonna have its first meeting either, I think, the week after next. We're, we're working out the date, there's three possible dates. I think it's gonna be the Wednesday.
The Wednesday, okay.
Yeah, but I'll get back with everyone tomorrow. It's only one person I haven't heard from yet.
Okay.
But, yeah, and we'll, I'll get Deb to send out the agenda and warn the meeting once we know the date. Yeah, that'll be for the municipal planning grant for the West Paulette Village Center Master Plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Everybody's, please encourage to, to come to the meetings and stuff, and...
Yeah, it's a public meeting. We'll, I think we'll hold it by Zoom, just cause it's more convenient. But it will be a public meeting.
The, the point of this meeting is to, uh...
Yeah, the point of this meeting is for us to get together a request for proposals to get a firm to come in and help us do this planning. Yeah.
And your, the title of the committee is the Municipal Planning Grant Committee?
The Municipal Planning Grant Committee, yeah.
And date, official date to be determined, there will be a warning?
Yeah. It'll be in the next two weeks.
That could be a rock band's title, be West Paulette Municipal Planning Grant.
You're a seasoned veteran, you should, you should join us.
If I could play the drums, I would.
You all lean out the way over to West Paulette, John, you should.
Yeah, aye, okay. Probably 600 acres in West Paulette.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have that, and we'll get this, that started, and I'll be positive. Is there anything else? Any new business? Okay. Any public comment? Annika?
I'd like to make some, a public comment on previous meetings.
Uh-huh.
Any questions and observations? But first of all, I was trying to, I went through this process with Ronny, and I appreciate the way you worked. And I know what it's like to be on an organization or a board, but I do appreciate it. But I do have questions on the 25th and the 11th meeting about the changing of the article. Um, that I know you voted three to one, that it was to be as is with a non-binding. But it turned up on the first, um, warning as a revised article.
Right. That was a miscommunication between the board and, and our attorney. We talked to her about it, and we talked about a lot of different options. And when we asked her to, to make sure that we understood how to make sure it was non-binding, C was misunderstood and thought that we wanted to just put that out there as a public comment, not to be held correctly. And as soon as we realized that it, that it had gone that way, because it didn't circulate back, it circulates back to Deb, and then it gets posted, and, and then we saw it, and then we, and then we got it corrected. But it, it wasn't intended to be reworded or anything like that. It was a miscommunication between the board and our attorney.
Okay, so why did you need an attorney to?
Because we wanted to make sure that, that we had everything corrected, so that it was the way it was written, but it was non-binding. We didn't want to phrase it wrong or improper, and that's why we checked with her.
Well, so you're, so you're using our taxpayer money to...
Because when we do stuff like that, we check with the attorney on quite a lot of stuff. Sometimes it's, it's not always known or publicized, but we're not going to make something that's gonna go in an article or make some type of decision without having input from her, just because of that's the way that this world is now. That with everything that's gone on in this town over the last few years, we found that it's very necessary to have everything scrutinized before we put our names on it.
Okay. But it seemed to me, you know, coming from little state, I've been doing 32 years, you know, when I have a seller and a buyer, and I get both, I can't represent both. So, and I, because then I would be impartial. I would be favoring one over the other. I can't put my loyalties in both spots. So I found this, it occurred to me, that there were comments from Mr. Malcolm, that the article's sloppy and appropriate, he wanted to exclude it. And then also on the meeting of September 17th, 2021, he said he does, the historical society does not endorse this project. Now, I know Mr. Malcolm is on the historical society. So to me, this is a, a division of loyalty. And I think that, well, officials have refused themselves. But not only that, the historical society did not vote to not endorse this project. There was no vote. You had a president at the time who supported it, and all three. You had a past president who supported it, on agree. There were others, actually, who supported this monument, but not on agree. So you kind of divided historical society. But there are comments from Mr. Malcolm constantly, of, you know, I think, divided his loyalty on it. And the VLCT Select Board, the VLCT Campbell, specifically says, voters reasonably expect that the local official is making a decision. He or she will give first consideration to the interests of the town. An official's close affiliation with, or membership in another organization may result in division of loyalty. Failure to address conflict may result in deception of the official who's using the office for the good interest of the other town. So, to me, coming from real things, we have to navigate those difficult situations. And there are penalties to that response. You can't become a dual agency, for example. So, I'm just happening here, and it was, it's just very... So, if you can address that, I would appreciate it, because, you know, it really compromised my position. It, it put me in a bad position. And also the manipulation of the article. I mean, this is, this is on news, this is published. And I, I don't think there was proper conduct here. So, if you can address that?
Sure. I think my loyalty to the town superseded my loyalty to the historical society. And no, there was never a vote taken, so there was never a vote to support. The question was, should we support this endeavor? And there was never a motion, and, I'm the secretary, I write the minutes, of the historical society, and there was, there was not a motion. And so there was, to me, no conflict. I think the conflict for you is that in light of the library board didn't vote for it, the historical society didn't vote for it, since we own a previous monument. So just for that, and the three to one vote is incorrect. The question of that on the floor of our meeting was, should we include it in the warning? And that was three to one. The next, the entire warning, which included, included the monument article, I voted for. Cause I, I lost, obviously, on the previous thing. And part of the reason I brought that up was the Vermont Statute's online, Title 17, Chapter 00055, or Number 2666. Neither the warning, the notice, the official voter information cards, nor the ballot itself shall include any opinion or comment by anybody, or officer, or other person on any matter to be voted on. Which is also the advice we got from Garrett Baxter from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And that was the question I had to present. That three out of the five sentences were promotional, weren't directed just at the question. And so, I didn't want the town, I didn't want, I thought it was sloppy in that, that it proposed that for the town. And I don't think the town should have gotten involved with that. But I voted for the final article, total warning, not the final article, the total warning, as we had voted that we would.
You had said?
Would, there was two questions. The first question was, were we going to include it or not?
And you said?
And I said...
Excluded. I have it here on January 5th.
Yes, yes, and I wanted to, and I did. That was the question on that, on the floor at that time. That didn't pass, or I mean, my objection didn't pass. And so then, when the, so it passed to include it. And so then the next question was, do we vote for the entire warning? And I voted for that.
That was three to one?
No, it was three to one the first time, but I specifically voted, and I'm prepared to defend that, because, uh, you know, I, I folded my cards on that issue and respected the rest of the board and didn't want to go to town meeting with a divided board. So I saw, and so I voted for it.
You voted for the article to remain as is. That's what you, and so it's no vote, like you said?
No, I wanted, the motion was that it was non-binding. We voted for the original article without any changes, except that it would be non-binding.
So that's, that's...
Yeah, it says, I have the minute.
Please clarify that.
So, the, it says, right here from the minutes, the approved minutes in Section E within the town clerk's memo. It reads, motion made to place Article 32 in draft information town meeting warning in parentheses on the ballot with edited language making it non-binding. Mover, Bob Jones, second, Rich Hewlett. Discussion, none. Result, Jessica Van Orte, Rich Hewlett, Bob Jones in favor, John Malcolm opposed. The motion was approved. The next motion was made to sign the information town meeting warning, which includes all of the articles. Mover, Jessica Van Orte, second, Rich Hewlett. Discussion, none. Result, approved, which is a unanimous approval.
But regardless, regardless, um, this, to me, is a conflict of interest. And to get back to your point, the library board did not take a vote. And the historical board did not take a vote. It was no, there was no formal vote there.
But also neither of them voted to support it.
What does that mean?
I'm asking you.
Yep, it, it means that, that there is a divided, there's divided opinions here.
That they, that they voted again?
There's divided opinion on the library.
They did not vote in support of it.
There's divided opinion on the library board. There's divided opinion on Mr. Starkford. I know Mr. Starkford, that, that I was told that no vote...
We're gonna have to wrap this up, because the voters who voted on this morning, and that's, and that's, it's on the way you conditioned us to have. No one else on the board feels that there's a conflict of interest?
May I speak?
Yes.
On two things. First of all, with regards to the library, we had four members present, they were polled. Two people voted in favor of it, one person opposed it, one person was absent, and I spoke with her later. And the chairman of the library board abstained pending further information, and did, as did Jackie Bexton. They both said we'd like more information before we take a final vote on this. So it was left up in the air. But addressing the issue of conflict of interest, you, you have to know that even the appearance of conflict of interest with any public board or agency or entity in and of itself is something that you have to avoid at all costs. You can argue back and forth whether there is conflict of interest, but if it's out there and it can reasonably be deduced that there might be conflict of interest, that, that should have been a warning shot across the bow before moving forward with it.
Anybody else have any questions? Can I answer anything on this, John?
There isn't any question that historical society had anything to do with this project, managing it or, or proposing it. And so that's why I see no conflict. And so that's why I see no conflict of interest. It isn't like...
They actively opposed it. They actively spoken out several members of the board.
We did not support it.
So you went beyond that. You actively opposed it. Several members of the board actively spoke out about this repeatedly.
Well, why is that any different than if you quote two former presidents, support it? Why they can support it, but members of the historic, the present Historical Society can't?
The point I'm making, John, is the appearance was given that the historic board is opposed to this project. Not that they don't support it, but that they oppose it. That's, that's a difference. It's a big difference. It's one thing to say you don't oppose it, but you don't endorse it. You're neutral on it. But there was never any indication from the historic board of neutrality, ever.
Well, what, why is that an issue here? I mean...
We're done talking about this. We're done for tonight. You brought up all your points. Thank you very much for bringing up your points. It's important that you bring up your points.
Yes.
I allotted you fifteen minutes for this.
Well, I, I think...
That's much more than...
I think they should be brought up. I told you, I appreciate the work you do, but I think that these things should be noted. I think they should be, people should be aware that there are inconsistencies here. And I don't understand, if you could just answer one question. When we did take the vote, the board did take a vote, there was a motion to take a vote initially. And then it was not voted on, the rest of the board.
Because nobody seconded that motion.
So, so, so you said the motion, Mr. Beecher, you said the motion is dead.
Right.
But it was reported in the minutes that it was not approved.
How did you record it in the minutes that it was not approved?
Said not approved, so...
I think that it's important to remember here that we're all just humans. And there's, there was no ill intention and, I mean, my, I didn't use the word dead in the minutes because that's not traditionally a word that gets used in minutes when you're reflecting whether it is approved or not approved. And I, I don't, I mean, I'll, I'll look, but let's see.
I think that's really...
Yeah, I said, motion made to place $10,000 for helping hands on the ballot despite lack of signatures given the difficulties to obtain due to COVID. Mover Jessica Van Orte, second, none, discussion none, motion not approved. So Mike used the words were dead because that's something that can be, a word that can be used. But ultimately, it was not approved. And I felt, just in my experience and judgment, that is traditionally...
But that's not what it says. You said not approved.
All right, that's, we're done. We're done.
The result was not approved.
We're done. Thank you very much for your point, but we're done. We're not beating this around anymore. We've been going around and around, you're nitpicking about all these little things, these little teeny little things like that. And that's not relevant. The fact is that it's on the back, it's on the warning for the town and the town can vote on it. And then we'll discuss it again after we get the results from what the town votes on.
So can you...
Thank you very much.
...tell me about the meeting coming up on the, what is it, the twenty-eighth? Why has there heard a discussion on this article? If it's...
You have, you, the town meeting is a town meeting. You can come and talk about that.
But it said on the warning that will be discussion on this article.
Wait, what?
Everybody has the right to discuss everything as they go through the warning at the meeting.
Well, it was singled out as a discussion on this particular...
Everybody gets one crack at saying what they need to say and until it circles around the audience. And then if the audience is approved, you may have a second chance to speak on a certain issue.
I think Deb might have her hat and hand raised.
I think that this might refer to the language that had to be put in because of the timing, because this was late. But Deb may be able to clarify.
Deb, are you here?
Yes, I am. That, the wording that was added, or the wording that was added to the warning was to give the select board an opportunity to explain the correction, the corrected article. That's what that is.
So then that's all that you intend to speak of yourselves at that meeting?
If anybody has any questions, they can ask us at that point. Why, why the article came out one way and then it came out the other way? And I can explain to them that it was a miscommunication between the board and our attorney. She, she was thinking that we had a different idea in mind when we wanted it to be non-binding. We corrected it and it's on the warning the way you proposed it with your signatures. And that's the way it will get voted on.
So what does non-binding actually mean to you?
It's an advisory.
So theoretically, you can have an overwhelming amount of people in favor of this, but it's non-binding and you might still decide not to move forward with it?
Yes, that's correct.
Isn't there a reasonable expectation that a town board is going to act?
Because you're talking hypothetical. You don't know that we're gonna do that. It's all hypothetical right now till we get the results and then we deal, we act upon it after we get the results.
But the word hypothetical isn't something afterwards, it's right now.
If I may, instead of the back and forth, there's some great resources and information that have been provided, I know to you and to the board about how this whole process works and why the languages are put in and what actually the responsibility of the select board is following town meeting and following the ballots. And there's just a lot of good resources out there, which I think it would be a benefit for everybody to familiarize themselves on because I think a lot of the questions are answered there. But like Mike said, we've been in public comment, which if you'd like more time on the agenda, I can certainly put you on under pre-requested. But everybody in public comment per the rules and procedures gets two minutes to speak. And I think we've gone well beyond that. And I feel like in an interest of consistency and trying to maintain some order, I think Chuck might have a hand raised. There's other people in the room. Certainly, everybody can finish up, but...
Chuck's got his hand raised.
Chuck, are you here to talk? Is your hand up or is your hand in front of your? Hold on, I'm asking you to unmute. There you, there you go.
All right. Michael, I would like to ask you about Route one fifty-three between, between town property on the left going into West Pollitt and Williams' quarry on the right.
So...
I've noticed when I went to a funeral in Salem, I went that way and I think there is a collapse starting. Have you contacted Williamses or what?
I can tell you what I know about it, Chuck. Richie, Richie and I have gone and looked at it several months ago. And ever since they filled the road in there back in seventy, every time that they would pump the quarry or do any kind of work in the quarry, especially when they took the water down and blasted, it would always settle that rubbish. Now, they filled, I think somewhere around three hundred feet of that slate rubbish when they, when they straightened the road out there. And, and every time they've worked that quarry and actually for the first ten years, that road settled every year. So probably right now, that road is settled fifteen or twenty feet in its, in its life. We are, we did talk to Williamses and they're working their way toward dumping their rubbish over against that bank to help stabilize that bank more. But in the spring, we'll just have to fill it and reblacktop over it again like we have for several years as, as long as that. It's not, it's, what we've always seen there is that it's a very slow gradual settling, not really a slide or a blowout or a soft spot in, in the material. It's just the, the set, the natural settling process of the slate rubbish.
Okay, Mike.
Thanks for bringing that up though, Chuck.
Yes. It gives me good vibes to be in the audience.
Well, we're very happy that you're in the audience, Chuck. Is that too late for a write-in, Chuck?
Lou.
All right, everyone. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. We ready?
Yep.
All right, I move we adjourn.
Bob seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.